Okay, so the September 10th meeting.
Okay, Bobby, if you could do a roll call.
Okay. Robert Thicker is excused. He won't be here. We have Robert Sheri.
Present.
Gina Morris.
Present.
Chris Wright.
Present.
Sharon Capri.
Present.
And Jeffrey Musall. Is present. He's on mute again. Colin Bullock.
Present.
And with that, Bobby, we do have a quorum.
And we have a quorum. So the next on the agenda, if Jeffrey can't get on, is the consent calendar from the planning minutes from last month's meeting. We have someone that wants to make a motion to approve it.
Planning Commissioner Wright, motion to approve PC minutes 2020-08113 PDF.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
The motion has been put forward and seconded. Do we take a vote?
I'll say aye.
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 That's four. Who else?
Did you get me? Aye?
Yep.
Got y'all. Okay. So we have a quasi-dujist hearing, public hearing, that Keith is going to take over now.
So.
Yeah, I think Colin needs to read that.
Yeah, I do. Okay, ORS 197.763 requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards and must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence toward the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is also known as the quote "raise it or waive it" end quote requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at LUBA. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designated respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing of an on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such requests through a continuance or extension of the record.
Jeffrey, are you there? Need to call for any abstentations or bias ex parte contact conflicts of interest or objections to jurisdictions.
At this time, I'd like to call for any expertise, any conflicts of interest, or any objections. Are there any?
No.
Okay.
Okay, I think he said turn it over to staff. Are we ready?
That's correct.
Okay. So my name's Keith Leonard. I'm an associate planner here with the city of Newburgh. I'm going to present the South College Commons subdivision. It's located at 1100 South College Street. The file number is SUB3200013. There is because we're required to have a public hearing because there is stream corridor within this property. And this for the September 10th Planning Commission, year 2020. I'd like to enter in my staff report, all exhibits and attachments into the public record. Next slide, please. So the proposal is for an eight lot subdivision on 1.7 acres of property. There is a good portion that is within a stream corridor. I already mentioned the locations, 1100 South College Street. The tax lot number is 01100. The applicant is Northwest Summit Development LLC. The owner is John C. Nyberg Trust. The property is zoned R2. That's our medium density residential district. And as I've mentioned, this, there is a stream corridor subdistrict within this property. And the review criteria is Newburgh Development Code 15.235.050A. Next slide, please. So here's the property. Just to the west is South College. The property is outlined in red. And as I mentioned, the blue area is the stream corridor. Over half of the property is within a stream corridor. Next slide, please. So the topography from the northern portion is primarily flat. When you get moved downward to the south portion of the property, it slopes down, down to about 45 feet where the stream is located. Current land use is vacant. The natural features there is a stream corridor. It's heavily wooded. And then there's an unnamed tributary of the Shalem Creek that runs through there. Next slide. Surrounding land use to the north are single family homes. To the east, you have multiple family. South, dense vegetation. And again, that's a stream corridor. And on the other side of that stream corridor, you have additional multiple family residential. And then to the west, you have South College Street. And across from South College Street, you have some single family homes as well as some duplex homes. Next slide, please. The property is zoned R2. Abutting to the east, you have R3 zone property, but the rest of it is primarily R2. Next slide, please. So the access will be taken from South College Street. This is classified as a minor collector street. There is water available in the form of a six inch water line within South College Street. There's an eight inch public wastewater line also within South College Street. A 12 inch public stormwater line within South College Street. And there are overhead utilities, electric and that sort of thing. There are a lot of overhead lines and there's some topography there. So within our development code in section 15.430010, there are exceptions that are allowed. The applicant would have to make an argument for those exceptions. Next slide, please. This is the preliminary plat. Two red lines are indicating where we have access easements. So the longer one is also part of that piece of property that abuts South College is also part of Lot 8, which is the larger lot to the north, or actually it'd be to the east, we're turned sideways. And so that easement would provide access for lots three and four. And then there's another access easement that would be contained within Lot 6. And that would provide access to Lot 7, which is just on the other side of Lot 6 there. And then lots 1, 2, and 5, along with of course Lot 6, all have frontage on South College Street. Next slide, please. And also, actually, could you back up there? I forgot to mention one thing.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I'm telling you to back up. So you'll see, there's also a tract that abuts Lot 5. That's going to be a stormwater tract there. And that's what the cloud and the lightning indicates. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, there's stream corridor here. The buildable portions of lot will be located outside of the stream corridor. The applicant is not planning on developing any portion of the stream corridor. The stormwater would discharge within the stream corridor. There will be erosion control devices that would be reviewed by our engineering department. In the area of the stream corridor, the property grades off pretty steeply. So what we've allowed is a curb tight sidewalk. So that curb tight sidewalk would butt the street. And we may also need some additional grading and some erosion control devices in that area of the stream corridor. There will be a rail or a fence installed along that portion of the sidewalk so that it doesn't become a falling hazard to the folks that are walking along that sidewalk. And any work within the stream corridor that I mentioned here would require a type 1 permit, which is an administrative review. And there are requirements within our development code that they would have to meet for any work within that stream corridor. Next slide, please. The applicable criteria is in section 15.235.050A. So with this property or with this development, lot size averaging was used. So you have lots that are between 2,527 and 5,441 square feet. That comes out to be an average of about 3,406 square feet. And the R2 zoning district requires a minimum of 3,000 square feet per lot. And so the way these areas are calculated doesn't include stream corridor. It doesn't include right of way or access easements within those lot area calculations. And then the stormwater tract is going to be located on track A. And all lots at the building line would have that 25 feet of width that is required within our development code. Next slide, please. And frontage, all lots within the city of Newburgh, that you'd have to have at least that 25 feet of frontage. And the only lots that wouldn't have that 25 feet of frontage would be accessed by those access easements that I pointed out. And those lots that don't have frontage are 3, 4, and 7. But the access easements meet the minimum width and would provide access to those lots. There will be a requirement for additional parking. When we have a driveway where three or more lots access shared driveway, then we require additional parking. The applicant has demonstrated the ability to locate those three additional parking spaces. So that requirement is met. And then some of the street improvements, you had to construct streets per standards. Obtain public improvements permits, obtain other agency permits, shared driveway easements. There's going to be a bike lane sidewalk, as I've mentioned. Some street trees, probably not in the area of the stream corridor. There's not going to be a plan or strip and there's just no room. And then a 10 foot utility easement along the frontage of the lots will be required and also street lights. Next slide, please. And road cross section, they are asking for a reduction in the cross section in the area of where the stream corridor is. So normally, a minor collector requires a 40 foot curb to curb cross section. In this case, they're requesting a 24 foot curb to curb cross section on South College Street. Next slide, please. And so as we went through this report and we were discussing things with the applicant, we came across some confusing language. So I'm proposing that the staff report does get revised. This would be section 15.405.030. And it's under section A, B, C, and D. Lot dimensions and frontage. So the finding here basically referred to the Lot 8 being provided access by the access easement. But the fact is that the access easement is going to be located on Lot 8. So there's no need for that. It's part of the lot. So that's what this language is doing. So we proposed to add some with the bold and underline text. The strike through would be removed. And then because of removing some of this language, this would make this criterion met as well. So next slide, please. And along with these reports we write, you have findings. These findings set up the conditions of approval. And these conditions of approval bring the development up to where they meet the requirements of the municipal code. So I'm not going to read through all the conditions of approval, just briefly. The conditions approval did address overhead power lines, and we talked a little bit about that. Required permits related to the public utilities. TVF and R are going to have requirements. They're going to want to make sure that there's enough fire flow and, you know, fire hydrant close and all the things they look for. There may be some street improvements out front. If I remember right, there isn't a sidewalk in that area. So that's what that references to streets and street lighting and also various other permits. Yamhill County would be one of those permitting agencies. Next slide, please. And here's revised condition of approval. What we are recommending is the removal of condition 1A. This was where I had referred to Lot 8 being provided access. This condition isn't needed. Next slide. And then additional revised conditions, this would be under 7B 2 and 3. What we're saying here is, once again, to cross out Lot 8 because that access easement is going to be located on Lot 8, so we're referencing that in number 2. And then lots 3 and 4 would be, the lots would benefit from that easement. And it's 25 foot wide shared easement. That's, again, meets that 25 feet of width on South College Street on frontage, frontage on the street. And then for Lot 6, that easement is going to be located on Lot 6, providing access to Lot 7. Next slide, please. So the staff recommendation is to adopt Planning Commission Order 2020-04, which proves requested subdivision preliminary plat with findings shown in exhibit A. And as amended, we talked about those amendments. And the conditions approval shown in exhibit B as amended. And that is my presentation. I will turn it back to the planning commission, and I believe the applicant is here to answer any questions.
I have a question for you, Keith. On page 7 of your report, which is in the 15.405.030 section, item B2 on the top of the page.
I'm getting to the staff report. What page was that on? I'm sorry.
Page 7.
7, okay. Okay.
Item B2.
Okay.
It clearly says that in the R2 zone, lots must be 5,000 square feet.
Yeah, well, see, the way that reads is it is a confusing portion of our code. So when you have a property that is in excess of 15,000 square feet, then that 5,000 square foot lot requirement kicks in for multiple family, single, multiple single family, duplex, multiple family dwelling units. So that's where that 5,000 square foot number comes. The base requirement is 3,000 square feet per lot and also 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit. And then D below is where the lot size averaging comes in. Because this is a subdivision, they can utilize lot size averaging.
It clearly says they have to be 5,000, right?
Yeah.
And then on the averaging part of it, it says down in D.
See, for the multiple.
Size of all lots is at least the minimum lot size. And minimum lot size per number two above is 5,000.
Well, multiple single family actually means multiple single family on one lot. We do have a development like that. So that's where that 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit would kick in. Because they're subdividing this into multiple lots and it's not going to be multiple single family located on a single lot, then that 15,000 square feet or the 5,000 square feet wouldn't be applicable. It would go back to the 3,000 square feet of lot or developable site area per dwelling unit. If they were developing the entire lot as a single lot, then it would exceed that 15,000 square feet. But they're going to be subdividing it.
Well, there's two ways to read it, I think. And when it talks about a lot or development sites, and your development site is that 27,000 square feet that's left over after you deduct the stuff from the stream corridor and a couple of other things. And the way I view it, it ought to be, they should be 5,000.
All I can say is that what we've done in the past and the way Doug Rox has interpreted this section is that when you have a single lot where they're going to have multiple single families homes located on that, that's where this 15,000 square foot or duplexes and that sort of thing. But when it comes to just the base zoning and because they're subdividing this into separate lots which are going to contain separate single family homes, that's where this 3,000 square feet requirement. This is the way it's been interpreted and applied since March of 2018 when I started working here.
Well, as you know, I'm new. And I read it differently.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, you know, I leave it up to Doug to do these interpretations and he's kind of the final word, so. But I appreciate the question. And actually, when I first started here, this section and some of these requirements really confused me as well. It took me a while to wrap my head around that.
Yeah, maybe they should be written better.
Yeah, well, I believe Doug is going to be working on some code amendments. And part of that is to clean up some of the text within this development code that we utilize.
All right.
I also have a question for you, Keith.
Sure.
On page 22 of the report, page 14 of your report, and you also talked about this in your slideshow, the minor collector width requirement. So you said the applicant requested an exemption to the code. I'm asking what justifies giving them that exemption?
So engineering's here, but I will try my planner best to explain this. Within where you have the stream corridor, you have an area in which that width wouldn't be realistic to have. So that narrowing is actually going to take place, and correct me if I'm wrong, the applicant's here as well. That narrowing is going to take place where the stream corridor is. So if you're driving down South College, you'll notice up on the area where the developable part of the slot is, it's primarily flat, but then it dips way down. And so because of the grade within to the, into the stream corridor and not wanting to make those impacts to the stream corridor, then engineering department was comfortable with making that allowance for a more narrow right of way.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chris Wright, Planning Commissioner. On the Lot 8, because of the over nine foot gradient, the 12 foot riparian is increased to 22 feet, I do believe, by the state of Oregon. So is Lot 8 being set aside for utilities?
I believe Lot 8 will be developable, but the, what would be the southern portion of that lot, where it tails off significantly. And I walked this property. It does really drop off. There's a very clear distinct change from where the bank of the stream corridor is. So all the development portion of that will take place on the flat area. They won't be building within the stream corridor. It's not permitted. And we do have other stormwater systems that do empty out into the stream corridors. They have to utilize riprap and some other engineering techniques to make sure that erosion isn't caused and that sort of thing. But the applicant is also here and they could maybe answer this a little bit better in terms of what their plan is.
I have a question too. On one of our GIS maps, this is actually behind the cul-de-sac of the apartments. This is actually a headwater as well as the start of a stream collector. Having that be a headwater literally behind this property as the drainage area for our aquifer, are they planning on adding additional flow catchment or sediment inundation, other issues like that?
I think that we're getting into the engineering realm and planners get very dangerous when they start talking about engineering. So I think I'll turn it over to the engineers to kind of talk a little bit more about the stormwater and drainage and what they do to, you know, control some.
All right, thank you.
I have another question, Keith. Going back to the 15.405.0 and a lot area thing, item A2, where it talks about average lot size, says it shall not exceed 5,000 square feet on average. Yet in information the applicant provided, they declare that the average lot area is 8,735 square feet.
Yeah, what they did is included the stream corridor and I believe also the access easements. And the way our code is written, those aren't allowed to be included in the square footage calculations for a lot. And this is actually one of the things that really confused me because you have an A and B. They're similarly worded.
Yeah.
A is talking about just lot size. And then B is talking about dwelling unit with the required dwelling unit per, or required area per dwelling unit. That's it. Yeah, so, yeah, it's confusing. And it's, I believe, one of the sections that Doug is going to be looking at.
Yeah, this is again Commissioner Wright. Also on page 7 towards the base, number D.
Open up the.
Findings. It is stated the lot area does not include land with public or private streets or stream corridors. So if they accidentally use that, is that going to be rectified in the future?
Is that going to be, I can't hear you.
The lot area says it does not include, but you just stated that they did include the stream corridor.
Yeah, and their staff, well, I shouldn't say in their staff report, in their narrative, they included those. But we're required to take those out. So that's why we referred to removing the, you know, the stream corridor, private streets. And this is all things that don't go into the lot area calculations when we're looking at the required lot area for each dwelling unit.
And I have another comment about what the applicant supplied. They declared that in the R2 zoning district, the average overall density, I guess, per the comprehensive plan is 16 and a half units per acre. And that's wrong. That's in an R3 zone.
Yeah. What we relied on too is, is the, um, zoning designation. So the, the comprehensive plan is, is kind of a guide. Those are target densities. That's what we, we're, we're shooting for. They're not always met and sometimes they, they may be even slightly exceeded. But yeah, I, I, uh, I, I can't, can't speak for the applicant on that one, but.
No, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's nine in the, in the R2 zone. Uh, but 16 and a half is what they have in the R3.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, again, it, it was listed in their report. So I, we, we didn't base our, uh, finding on, on everything that they put in the report. We always review the development as a standalone.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I'm just pointing out that, that, that's, that's an error on their part.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I got for now.
Um, so do, do we turn it over to the applicant now to, uh, have them, uh, respond to the staff report?
Yes, please.
Yeah, this is, um, Commissioner Musaw. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the applicant to respond to any questions from commissioners.
Good evening, commissioners. This is Jessica Kane. I'm a member of Northwest Summit Development LLC, and we concur with the staff report. Commissioner Sherry, I would like to note that yes, that was a scribner's error with regard to the reference to the R3, uh, density. It is nine, you're correct, and we do meet that density. Uh, with regard to the lot size, I just want to point out that R2 lot size is 3,000 square foot minimum, um, and the maximum is 5,000 square feet. If you read that section that we were just discussing, um, what it talks about is that multiple single family duplex or multifamily dwellings shall be developed at a minimum of one dwelling for 5,000 square foot. But that's not an applicable standard, um, according to how subdivisions have been done for, I mean, I've been doing this for probably the last 20 years. And, um, once the code changed to 3,000 square foot minimum for R2, that has been the standard. And so clearly this is a section that probably needs to be clarified, but it is a well-known, uh, and applied standard in the city of Newburgh that R2 zoning is a 3,000 square foot lot minimum. We do meet that minimum lot size. If you do remove the stream corridor and, uh, access utility easements and public right-of-way, we're just a little bit in excess of that 3,000 square feet. Um, I do think that addresses the questions that were raised. I'm happy to answer any questions. Dan Denetich, uh, who is also a member of Northwest Summit Development, is here as well. He does the engineering side. I do the planning side, so we're happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Is the engineer there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Um, can you give us a little bit of a background on your education, including any geological processes that you have?
Well, I'm a registered environmental and civil engineer in the state of Oregon with 25 years of experience in both public and private sector engineering and design. Uh, I'm not a geologist, uh, or registered as a geologist.
Do you have any, uh, background in georemytho- georemythology or have consulted anybody on this site?
No, we have not.
Okay.
I would like to clarify that if there's any, uh, geotechnical services that are required as a part of the subdivision and public works permit, we will, of course, consult with those engineers and continue to work with them. Um, and any recommendations they may have that meet any requirements of either the city of Newburgh or the state of Oregon.
Yeah, I noticed that you're a public utilities, according to the geology, that you would have to keep the overhead lines on some of the subdivision. Is that correct?
No, that, when the subdivision is completed, there'll be no overhead lines on the frontage of the subdivision itself. There are overhead lines on the west side of South College and those were made overhead afterwards.
Okay. And what will be your, uh, some of your, uh, stream mitigation?
Uh, well, then getting to water quality, we have, as, uh, Keith pointed out, tract A, which is our onsite water quality and detention facility. So that'll be designed to retain some of that first flush of water, given the ability to be treated through vegetation before it then goes into the existing storm system in South College.
That's really nice that you guys, uh, actually locked out an area for those kind of, uh, issues, runoff and swell issues. Thanks to see that.
Yeah.
I have no further questions at this time.
Are there any other questions for the, at this time? Hold on, breaking up. Well, hearing no questions, we'd like to proceed. And, um, at this point, is it time to ask for approval of the, of the proposal?
Uh, Chair, Vice Chair, you should actually probably make sure that there is nobody in opposition. I don't see anybody on the participant list, but we should ac- actually ask that question before we move forward on the motion or.
Okay. Okay, I'd like, at this time, I'd like to ask if there are any one that would like to register an opinion and opposition? Okay, hearing none, we'd like to proceed. Is there anyone that would like to submit a proposal?
We'll need a.
I'm sorry.
Morning.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to, um, close the public portion and, um, proceed to a vote. I move to approve.
We, we need to have final comments from staff.
Yes. Okay, at this time, I'd like to have any fin- final comments from staff. My apologies.
Uh, yes, uh, and also, um, uh, you'll might want to make reference to the, um, striking, um, the one condition, uh, where is it? Striking, uh, condition 1A and making the amendments that were discussed to, um, uh, conditions 7B, 2 and 3. So with that, my recommendation is that that a planning commission, adopt planning commission order 2020 dash 04, which approves the requested subdivision preliminary plat with the findings shown exhibit A as amended and the conditions of approval shown in exhibit B. And again, as those changes to, um, the findings and then the, the conditions, if you so choose that we can do that. Thank you. That's my recommendation.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask if, um, anyone make a motion to approve the resolution and the amendments as described? I move to approve.
Sharon Capri, I move that we adopt the order 2020 dash 04.
Is there a second?
Planning Commissioner Wright. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. At this time, can we have a vote?
Okay. Robert Sherry?
Yes.
Gina Morris?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Can you come back? Can you come back to me, please?
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Jeffrey Musaw?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes, with the, uh, conditions and exhibit A and exhibit B. Thank you.
Hey.
At this time, uh, the motion has passed.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate it very much.
Yes, thank you.
And, and thank you for your patience on my, my haphazard vice chair, vice chairing here. Well, I, I'm in my cabin now, so ready to proceed forward out of a car. So, and I apologize, I don't have the agenda in front of me. What's the next item on agenda?
It's the, the transportation system plan update, riverfront briefing, and that will be presented from engineering Brett Music.
Okay, I'd like, at this time, I'd like to offer a, uh, proposal from engineering staff.
Okay, good morning or good evening, commissioners. This is Brett Music, senior engineer here at the city. Uh, we have a briefing for you on the transportation system plan, technical update that we're working on. As part of the riverfront master plan implementation, we're upgrading a, a number of the infrastructure plans, water, wastewater, stormwater, and the transportation system plan. So tonight, we have the consult, our consultants from Kittleson Associates, Matt Bell and Julia Kuhn, and they'll be presenting and giving a, a briefing of, of the first of several leading up to a comprehensive plan amendment for the riverfront area. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt and Julia.
Thank you, Brett, and thank you, everybody. I just have a brief presentation for you tonight. We want to try to save as much time as we can at the end for discussion. But I'm just to, just to kick things off, again, my name is Matt Bell and I'm with Kittleson and Associates. With me is, and, um, over the phone is Julia Kuhn, although I don't think she's sharing, sharing herself on the camera. Um, we've been working over the last few months with the city to provide an update to the city's transportation system plan. It is a technical update, so it's, it's a very, very focused update on incorporating elements of the riverfront master plan. Next slide. So, uh, we just have a few things that we want to go over with you tonight and then talk about where, where we're going. So first, we want to talk a little bit about what is a transportation system plan or a TSP? Why it's being updated, where we are in the process, and then we want to present some key findings from the existing needs and future needs analyses. Also, we're going to talk a little bit about next steps and the next time that we'll get together as a group and then again, save time at the end for questions. So, next slide. So first, what is a transportation system plan? So this, it is a, is a long-range plan, typically a multimodal plan that identifies projects, programs, policies for people driving, walking, cycling and taking transit, both within and, um, within, inside and outside of the city. So the TSP supports the city's anticipated growth in jobs and housing over the next 15 years and, uh, develops a transportation system that is capable of accommodating that growth. It helps the city with decisions related to land use actions and transportation funding priorities. So land use related to private development, which is like the one you were just discussing, and, uh, transportation funding priorities in terms of what projects get funded first and potentially how. Next, it helps the city work with other agency partners such as the Oregon Department of Transportation to seek funding for changes to the transportation system. Next slide. So why is the TSP being updated? So again, I guess I need to emphasize that this is a technical update. It's not a full update of the TSP. So, but there are a few things that we're hoping to address as part of this process. One of those things is to provide further clarification on projects that are located that are within the existing or currently adopted transportation system plan. And that is just to make sure that there's consistency between the, uh, the projects that are just shown and described in the tables, both in terms of how they're described as well as the priorities and how they're shown in the maps. So part of the process is going to be to get those, to talk to one another. Next, we want to incorporate recommendations from the riverfront master plan and incorporate those into those same tables and maps for the, for the city as, as a whole. We want to develop updated cost estimates for the implementation of the TSP. So taking another look at existing projects at the TSP as well as riverfront and updating those costs. And last, we want to re-prioritize the transportation improvements throughout the city. And just, just a moment on that last one there, we're, um, not looking to, not looking to fully re-prioritize all the projects that are in the current TSP, but more to integrate the projects within the riverfront master plan in appropriate priority along with the existing projects. So I'll talk a little bit more about this in a minute, but really we'd be just following the same methodology that was used in the existing TSP to, um, get those projects incorporated. Next slide. So next, where are we in the process? So first, we have, we've been doing a lot of, a lot of reading and reviewing and documenting and first, first and foremost, reviewed and summarized the existing needs analyses identified in both the, the current transportation system plan as well as in the riverfront master plan and the future needs analysis. So both plans, look at how things are operating today, project out into the future and identify additional needs for the future. So you look at both of those plans, summarize those conditions, and then identify areas where further, sorry, further review is needed to ensure consistency between the TSP and the riverfront master plan. So the next few slides really get to how some of the key issues and some of the key findings that we identified through this process. Next slide. So this is the riverfront area and, um, this is, I should say that this is a map that we, we were borrowing from the riverfront master plan for now. Uh, the, the northern, the northern extent of this map, I believe, is shown to be East Main Street, uh, the southern obviously being the Willamette River and the bypass show right there through the middle. So the focus of the update is largely on incorporating the projects, the policies, the plans, the projects that are identified within this area into the overall city's transportation system plan and ensuring that the projects are, are, um, well-integrated and not in conflict with anything. So next slide. So these are the key findings from the needs analyses. And, um, I apologize, I have a few notes over here, so if I'm looking over here, I'm not, um, surfing the net or anything. But we have, um, so for this, we just have a couple of specific areas that are highlighted in the riverfront master plan that are not as clearly as articulated in the TSP as we'd like them to be in, uh, further discussion as part of the TSP update process. So first, these are, um, so, in, in large part, these are, these are things that we were finding through this review. So first, we want to prioritize key walking and cycling connections between the downtown area and the riverfront as well as identify opportunities to improve access to the river and to the parks. Next, we want to address gaps in the sidewalks along college and 14th street as well as provide alternatives to the steep stairway connections to the, to the riverfront area. We also want to address bicycle connections to the Rogers Landing County Park and prioritize ADA curb ramps and pavement, pavement improvements in areas where those things need to be updated. We also want to identify potential future transit connections, reassess freight needs given the closure of the paper, sorry, the paper mill and signalize the Blaine Street, sorry, Blaine and First Street intersection and the. Signalize the Blaine Street, sorry, Blaine and First Street intersection and the Hancock Street intersection, if and when those intersections signals are warranted at those intersections. Lastly, we want to review the streetscape design for River Street and other key streets in the area. And primarily to provide on-street bicycle facilities and establish the creation of bicycle boulevards, long key streets within the riverfront area. So next slide. So based on a review of the future needs presented in the adopted TSP and the riverfront master plan, there are several things that we also feel like we need to consider. So first and foremost is, as I mentioned this earlier, but is to reevaluate projects on the likely to be funded list. So the current TSP has as a list that they consider the likely to be funded over the over the. The horizon of the TSP, which in this case, yours is yours ends in 2035. So we want to add, so whenever we go to add the projects from the riverfront master plan. That would increase the cost by approximately 33% over the next 15 years, so between now and 2035. So we want to do that, we want to be pretty careful about how we do that. So next, we want to determine whether local commercial industrial streets that are located in the that are identified in the riverfront master plan should be incorporated into the functional classification map. So these are some of the, not necessarily local streets, but streets that are identified to accommodate local commercial and industrial traffic. So also want to. Determine whether the collector and arterial streets within within these areas should have cycle tracks. For those that may not be familiar, cycle tracks are can be elevated or separated bicycle lanes that are just located along along roadways. So we also want to explore the continued use of sheros on collector and local streets. So sheros are pavement markings that are that are typically located within the street to identify where a bicyclist should be traveling. They're typically used on the lower speed and lower volume streets to 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 serve as a provider. Wayfinding as well as just to identify again, towards or orientate bicycles within the streets. Next, we want to add a cross-section options for for River Street. And there are. So this is primarily to accommodate the needs identified in the riverfront master plan to provide that love higher level of connectivity within the like to the riverfront area. Next, we want to reassess truck route designations on 11th and River Street. Next slide. So we, there's a few additional projects that we are a few different additional things we would also like to consider. Those include adding funding for intersection study, the OR 219 and when Newski Street intersection. Adding a trolley feasibility study to the likely to be funded list. We want to prioritize completion of the Heritage Trail and other trail projects located throughout the city. We want to add a feasibility study for a potential pedestrian and bicycle bridge across the limit. And finally, we want to continue to prioritize implementation of the downtown road diet project to support safe, comfortable, convenient travel for people walking, cycling, and taking transit and driving. Next slide. So our next steps is to, as I mentioned before, is to prior, is to not to prioritize all the projects in the TSP, but to prioritize the projects within the riverfront master plan with consideration to the products in the TSP. We want to prepare the draft TSP update to incorporate those key recommendations in the plan. And then the next time that we get together would will be sometime in November. As just just with with the planning commission. And then again, later on in November, as as part of a joint meeting with the planning commission and the city council. I believe that is my last slide. Oh, no, there's one more. Excellent. Any questions?
I'm just curious, this is Commissioner Capri, I'm curious about the pedestrian bridge. I haven't heard of that before. And that's fascinating, where would that be going to?
So I believe this one is called the Waterline Bridge. And to be honest, I'm not as familiar with that one as I could be. Brett might be able to back me up on that one, but.
Yes, the the references to the existing waterline bridge is Matt pointed out, and that's actually carries water from the well filled. Over to the water treatment plant currently, it's on the Marion County side of the road, it's it's up in the air quite a ways. There's been talk during the riverfront master plan and even farther back into the heritage trail plan with the CPRD. Of having utilizing that bridge or a separate bridge has been talked about as as well. Ideally, most of the conversations I'm aware of are with the some kind of retrofit of the existing bridge. There are some seismic challenges with that, we have learned in through our water system seismic resiliency study and then looking at that bridge that in a large Cascadian type event, that bridge is unlikely to withstand that. So it's it's a it's out there in the for consideration. At this point, it's we're not certain where where that might go, but it's something.
Okay, that sounds really very interesting. Thank you.
So Commissioner Wright, who actually owns that bridge? The line Waterline Bridge?
That actually is with the city. It's the old Highway 219 Bridge.
Commissioner Musall, I have a question about that, you did say there were seismic issues. What's being addressed, looked at as far as? Whether. Upgrade of that bridge versus a new bridge, would that mean? That the existing waterline would be incorporated into the new bridge?
If there was a new bridge, it would be potentially, it could be a pedestrian only bridge, that's that's not been pursued to my knowledge in a in a large. Fashion, that's kind of where there's this talk of a potential of a feasibility study related to that aspect of it. And.
That makes sense, I was just thinking if if a seismic upgrade would need it, it might be a two birds with one stone kind of situation.
That's a it's a potential if it were to go down that go that direction.
Brett, if I might, this is Julia Kuhn, and I apologize, my camera actually is not working very well, so Julia Kuhn from Kittleson. A couple of things on the Waterline Bridge. It is interesting to think about another vehicular connection, I've been working on the. Newburgh Dundee bypass, I think, since the early 90s and just thinking about how people get in and out of Newburgh, but. In order to add a vehicular connection outside of Newburgh that would go outside the urban growth boundary. It would actually require what the state of Oregon calls a goal exception, which is a pretty arduous test to say. That that's your only alternative to providing access. And to meeting your demands, so when we were looking at the Waterline Bridge, and I think when the it's safe to say, and I I look at current as well. But the riverfront master plan. And what we are seeing is as a pedestrian bicycle, it's more of an aspirational project because just because there's a lot of uphill. Considerations associated with it, it might be a pretty expensive project, and when you're thinking about your precious financial resources over the next 15 to 20 years. How does that fall within the list of priorities, but it is something we'll continue to think about.
Yes, thank you, Julia.
How much would be the cost of adding a? The vehicular connection to that bridge? Because if, okay, under the conditions that we're having now. Say we had a fire, earthquake, whatever, we have to evacuate to the south, we've got one route out of here, that's it. What are the other options for evacuating out of here? And can our binding or the block is the river? And if we have more than one connection, how much more does another bridge cost? Adding it into it, a walk bike and a seismic support with. A type of bridge, suspension bridge like they have in San Francisco. That allows for seismic issues, and I know there's going to be liquefaction factors down there, other things. And then even if that is taken out and. Can it truly be justified in this case, since we've got so many other springs and water available to us?
As far as a vehicular bridge connection, that's not, to my knowledge, that's not been looked at, so we don't, I don't have information to speak to what that cost would be at this time.
All right, thank you.
All right, if there are no more questions, comments, I would just say that again, we're, when we get back together in November. We will be presenting to you essentially will be the. An early draft version of the. TSP technical update and kind of talking through some of the key key elements of that plan. So look forward to seeing you guys again, and until then, hope you guys stay safe.
You too, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, is our meeting over, are we adjourned?
Not quite yet, you've got. I'll jump in here since Doug is not here. You do have a memo from Doug on what your planning commission activities for the rest of 2020 will be. And it looks like you guys have a stack of things that you'll be looking at over the next several months. Plus things into the future, actually. Looks like actually Doug is scheduling you out till June of next year at this point, so. So if you have any questions, let us know on that. And then I think. Mr. Vice Chair, the last item would be any, if there are any items from Commissioners and then adjournment.
I do have an item. I wanted to ask about. If we do not want to vote yes or no, and we want to vote undecided, how does that affect? The passing or not passing? Of one of these issues?
I think we just put it down as undecided.
Or you would have saying, and so your vote would, it would not go towards a majority. If we were looking for a majority to pass, whatever the item would be.
Okay, and if you do an undecided, that's just it, you don't have a certain time that you can go back? Okay.
Well, the decision is made, assuming a decision is made unless the the commission tables the decision or or asks to bring it back at some other point. Once that, once that vote is taken. Yeah, if you are undecided, you would not have necessarily an opportunity to come back and and vote one way or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Jeffrey, you're muted. So anybody?
Any other items from Commissioners? No other questions or items from Commissioners or staff at this time?
Nothing from staff at this point.
And if nothing further, then I'd I'd ask if there is an emotion, a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, does that require a vote, or do we just adjourn? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to close the September 10th meeting of the Planning Commission. Thank you and have a good evening.
Jeffrey, I have a question for you off. I'll take this. Oh, when I'm going to need your signature, and I was just curious when you'll be back.
I'll be back on the weekend, so.
Oh, you will, okay, so next, so sometime next week, we can have you stop by and sign.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, just let me know, I know I am fairly busy in my office on Monday, but after that, my my time opens up more.
Okay, that'll give us time to make the corrections that need to be made.
And again, I apologize for being late getting on the there, something held up the traffic getting out of the park there and is.
Hey, I think you're awesome, I think you're awesome for making it and persevering like that, are you kidding me?
Well, I appreciate it, I felt like. Last meeting, I couldn't find the link to get on, and I was running around trying to get, so I'm like, I'm gonna make this meeting. But and I, and I'm glad things are looking up as far as the fire there, I know I have a sister down in down near Medford that. Had, you know, she's out in the country by Shady Cove and had to evacuate her animals and everything, and she's still, she's still up in the air about what's going to happen, and I know a lot of people in our area in that situation. Hopefully, it'll improve shortly, is the is the wind died down pretty much?
Yeah.
That's that's good, that's good, okay, it's frustrating being so hard to get news because there's not many places where I have internet. But but again, thanks, everyone, for your patience, and you all have a good evening, and I'll touch base with you when I'm back in town.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Much, everybody have a good night. Stay safe.
Stay safe, everyone, good night.